The Honorable Mayor Todd Fuss presiding. Please remove all hats, turn all cell phones and make it off please. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you Sheriff. We will come to order. We're gonna have our prayer and our pledge. Commissioner Vickers, would you please raise your hand in prayer, please Sheriff.
Most county officials say we just need another day if you'd bless us with the Lord. We just ask you to be with us as long as we can. This is the county that we say everything we do in our toward you. Everything we do to help this county, Lord. We just like to see Australia and the board. We just ask you to continue to be with us. We have also had once this week. We just live by the Lord. We just ask you to continue to be with us tonight. We'll be in the prayer of Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation of God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Move to the seventh minute of the station.
Bail?
Here.
Bumper?
Here.
Dever?
Here.
Gill?
Here.
Brantham?
Here.
Ansley? Jenkins?
Here.
Kennmore?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Vanirch? Miller?
Here.
Hope?
Here.
Sane?
Here.
Vickers?
Here.
Wayne?
Here.
Wright?
Here. All right, at this time, there is a sign up sheet provided here at Cody. And I'm not sure Kristi, did you buy them or the public phone comments? We also have agendas here. Anybody who'd like an agenda? Make your list. Make sure everybody has one if they need one. Thank you Sheriff. All right. All right, moving on. And it's here, everybody got a chance to go with the minutes. Move to the seventh minute of the station. Motion been made. Section. Motion been made in front of the second, the second minute. All in favor, please see to find the same.
Aye, all opposed, like same.
All right, we will move into reports from our county officials. Numbers? Numbers and. Yeah, we need to do it. Yeah. You have a list of those numbers. Yeah. Y'all had a chance to look at those. I actually don't have a copy of those. Someone get ready.
Exactly.
Okay, we got first and second to approve the numbers. All right, any discussion on that? If there's none, let's leave it. All those in favor, see to find the same.
Aye.
All opposed, like same. Have been approved. Okay. The, uh, let's move into county. Uh, let's move into reports. I said we got some county officials here. All right, let's start. I see, I see Lee there in the front. Lee, are you standing in for Casey Swift tonight?
Yes.
All right, come on in. Please, we have a report for us tonight.
If y'all, Maggie, y'all should have a budget that he turned in for fiscal year twenty-four or twenty-five. I think some of y'all may have been talking to Casey Swift about that as well. Does anyone have any questions on him? There's no questions on that. Casey also had someone that had a question that the speed limit be changed on Knuckle Road to forty miles an hour. And he told us to bring it up before the county commission. Y'all put a vote on that?
Will it prove it? It's true.
What's the current?
I think it's thirty-five, thirty.
Yeah, I'm kind of want to talk to Casey about that. A year or so ago, whenever they paved that road, they put up signs that were thirty miles per hour. And I don't think that was ever thirty miles per hour. And, um, most county roads are not. Even tape road up there where there were down houses on both sides is forwarded. And once it comes out of the city limits, uh, we want it to go back forward even though it goes back into the city limits. And it hasn't been a problem, but coming down St. Louis, you go along St. Crooker and started sitting down there just ticking in your mind. And kind of yield thirty miles an hour. So, that's what I want to know. And I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve that.
I'll say that motion.
All right, we have a first and second on the floor. The first two, and that is the motion is change the speed limit to forty miles an hour. For that, for that section on Knuckle Road. And we have a second. Is any discussion on that? Yeah, I think it's Mr. Brown, the second. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Baylor, can you hear, can you hear?
Yeah, I was, I thought.
Is there any discussion on that? Well, and let me ask just a quick question. When that is approved, does that have, does that have to go back up before the, or the state for any time? Or proven on that? When, when the thing?
When permission approved, then it will be approved.
Because it's not state road, is it?
So, so Commissioner, saying what you're saying was changed by the state.
Well, I don't know that. As far as I knew, it was never thirty. I was surprised when they put the thirty seconds up there. But most county roads are, I believe, forty or forty-five.
The law says it's forty-five unless it's posted.
Right, right. But there's no, I mean, you know what I'm talking about Sheriff. I'm standing at Bob passing arsenal where it goes out of the city. And until it comes back in the city, it's not a lot of houses or anything down there. I mean, I was in the reason for the third.
And I ask you, does that mean it's coming all the way up? Is it only in the county? I said they are really black. Boy, in front of my house.
So, it's, it's currently posted at thirty?
Yeah.
All right, if there's any more discussion, we need to go call on that county clerk. All right, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor of changing that?
The budget, are we doing the budget now? We have more?
Well, this one, as we've got a motion to, to do this one first and we'll go into his budget. All right, we've got, uh, first and second to change that to a forty mile an hour. And if there's no other discussion, all those in favor of seeing the same.
Aye.
Opposed? And now we can go into your budget for the county, for the road department. Because we won't be handling any other portion of the budgets to make. So, here's a good one if we'll be checking that tonight.
Lee?
Yes, sir.
All right, these figures are showing your proposed forty-four, forty-five budget, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, the way this is stated here, I'm not figuring it out. On the last page, that's what we go by, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, what was your twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
The prior year, any fund balances for four billion, three fifty-two, eight ninety-seven. Is projected to end, the estimated begin fund balance of July one of twenty-four, twenty-five is three billion, nine oh three oh forty-three. This fiscal, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, he's going to end up taking four hundred ninety-nine thou- four hundred ninety-nine thousand, fifty-seven dollars out of his fund balance to balance his twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
All right, what's the twenty-four, twenty-five number?
Estimated end of fund balance for June thirtieth is three billion, four oh three, nine eighty-six. The. Let me find your, uh, total expenditures is going to be nine million, twenty-seven thousand, two twenty-four. And the total revenue is eight billion, five twenty-eight, point sixty-seven. So, now what about the four hundred thousand there? Is that the four ninety-nine, oh fifty-seven you're talking about? Yes, sir, under permission approved. Right. That's where he puts what he's requesting in from the county commission as far as what he's, he's putting in for his numbers. Under permission approved.
So, the word he's asking for three million, nine oh three, is that correct?
That's what the ending fund balance is going to be.
What, what I want to know, please, asking for for the forty-four, forty-five?
And I'm here to have that total.
So, you want to know what he presented to the budget?
Well, I'm asking what his budget was at twenty-three, twenty-four. What his proposed budget is at twenty-four, twenty-five. He tells us how much forward he's asking for, or how much less if he needs whatever.
Right.
We don't have those figures.
I do not, I do not see that figure.
We don't have those figures.
I do not see that figure.
Mr. Lee, what did you say that he was gonna, uh, take, you know, from his general? What's the figure that you said that he was gonna take from his, his funds to, you know, bring it out? Was that that, uh?
The figure, the difference, the figure he's asking for that's going to be if this budget is approved, it's going to be coming out his fund balance of four hundred ninety-nine thousand and fifty-seven dollars.
Right, so.
Mayor?
But I do not, but I do not see that grand total that you're looking for.
So, is this just a budget of meaning?
No, this is his proposed budget. We're just missing that total number that, uh, Mr. Dever is looking for there.
Mayor, I think we table this until we have clarification on all the questions that we got for the approval. Second. Okay, we got a first and second to table this. This is the second.
All right. All right.
You have to see your figure, please second. Um, he's looking for the total, all total budget with, uh, great review and the standards. I do not have it. I know what he has. He'll check in the fund. We have a first and second on the floor. We're going to table this until, uh, probably to the next meeting for more information.
Casey, I'll get that number and give back to you.
Yeah. Any discussion? County clerk, do you have a roll call? We do have, have roll calls. County clerk, would you please proceed?
Bail?
What, what are we looking?
Name of this?
Yes. Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Gill?
Yes.
Brantham?
Yes.
Ansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennmore?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Couldn't it? Miller?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Did you have any question? Oh, yeah, Lee, I need to bring this up because, uh, I had some calls about West Road. I think I talked to you earlier. Plans are to build that up.
Casey said that he has plans to build it up, but it's going to remain closed on that end until he get, he gets built up.
Part of that problem is the water on that side that you're coming in. When you drain.
Yes, sir, it's all running out here, it's all sloppy on both sides. Water has nowhere to go. So, we hope to use, it's just a little, a little bit raised up. So, it's going to be, you know, do that. Unfortunately, it falls at the end of fiscal year. And then I'll just write it down.
Thank you very much. Any sort of questions, Billy? Thank you, appreciate you. Doctor Smith, are you, are you?
We don't have any limits, access to people, but I don't know.
Thank you for that, uh, everybody receiving this information from Doctor Smith. And we're working on that. We've, we've, uh, we gotta go through some things with the budgets. Uh, Doctor Smith, he's done a wonderful job. And our old, our old budget team has, we're doing the same thing. Trying to work out the figures between the, of the tax progressions, of the sales tax, of the property tax. There's a lot of issues, so we're trying to work, work through those together. And, uh, appreciate, appreciate what you do, Doctor Smith. We'll, I think Lisa hits back. We propose that we all sit down again. We'll see again, maybe next week or something. Okay, as soon as we, we all get here to do that again, go through the numbers. Sane, he's got some new numbers he just came in yesterday. For the citizen. All right, uh, there's no other elected officials. We're waiting to try and stay. Ms. Allen, do you have anything?
Just waiting.
All right, we'll go into our meetings. We'll start around this. If you have anything for our field committee, sir.
The, uh, the plans expect supposedly been revised and approved. I have not reviewed them. Uh, we just got the letter to put in the paper this afternoon. And I sent it to you and Kristi, uh, for rebid the project. Yeah, I just sent it like five o'clock or six o'clock. So, anyway, uh, hopefully it'll get advertised and it's, it'll be a date, it's June sixth.
You send it to me tonight? I sent it to me tonight.
I didn't send it, I sent it to Kristi.
Right. If you send it to me now, it'll be on paper.
I'll do that tomorrow.
We may over there.
Oh, we sent it to Pat tomorrow. Get one this time.
Thank you.
Ms. Griffin, do you have anything?
I only, I only have one thing, Mayor. Uh, need to follow up on the archives building about the grant. And, uh, the building committee about, uh, doing a scope of work, a survey on the building. And what needs to be, uh, done first on it. Because that grant, uh, you know, is not unlimited time. And it is reimbursement grant, so whatever money is spent, the state will automatically reimburse it. So, if I can get to the building committee, we'll do a survey on the building, walk around. Got you.
I got, I got an estimate on just the repair on that canopy on the roof.
Yeah, this, this grant will cover everything on the outside. And it doesn't appear that the grant will be available next year, but it's still in the works.
So, do we have to spend a budget this?
We'll have to spend, this, this coming year, yes, yes. I mean, well, it can go up to the end of the year and then to part of next year also. You know, then you get into winter time and things like that, so. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Green. That's seventy-five, twenty-five. We, Tom, we talked to Tom.
Yeah, yeah, Tom, it's a seventy, seventy-five, twenty-five, that's correct.
Commissioner Kennedy, have you any questions?
Uh, just, we're meeting, uh, Thursday at six o'clock in the conference room for solid waste.
Commissioner Neller?
We're meeting next Thursday thirtieth at the Anthony Building at sixteen, at five.
Thirty?
Next Thursday, thirty.
Thank you, Ralph, on those budget limits. We get back around, we can do the share. All right, that's, uh. Sheriff, do you have anything on the litter grant, please, sir?
Yes.
April first to May, uh, fourth, or I'm sorry, April, April to May, uh, April, we picked up nine thousand, five hundred and sixty pounds of garbage. Uh, May is four thousand, eight hundred and twenty pounds of garbage. And year to date is a hundred fifty-four thousand pounds. That is the litter grant. Arden County Sheriff's, uh, Office of the Resort Court arrested a hundred and thirteen people, uh, sent five reports on criminal incidents, three drug offenses, twelve thefts, burglaries, eleven traffic offenses, fifteen assaults, six sex offenses, five wrongful, four groups, seven vandalism, six breaks, arrest and intimidation, and ten others animal deservers, trespassing, digging fire. Do not. Issues. That's all.
Sheriff, thank you, sir. Yeah, I appreciate that, take a minute. That, that's a lot of traction. Appreciate that. That's a, that's a great job. The, uh, I think we can give just a quick update. There is a workforce development program offered by the state. Grants from eighteen to twenty-four. And, uh, uh, and they have filled those different spots. It was for the southwest region, so it was eight counties, so there was a hundred and fifty. And those have been filled. What they do, and I'm gonna check on that eighteen, I believe, they settled to twenty-four. So, it's, uh, if you need workers and, uh, in the frontline sector as well. So, they will help and they will actually pay for it. So, it's a good training tool. The workforce development has that, they have lots of programs, but that's offered through Southwest. Now, that particular funding is run after cause, or they've already met their, their estimate that they had to have, and it was a hundred and fifty. So, they've got that. There are some more funds that are available. I'm gonna find out about that in a few days and let, let the commission know about it. Schools, they met with their graduates, they met with them and told them about the program. So, had several people from this county apply for that, so. Then, briefly, I had mentioned this before. We're working on this lease for the, uh, chiefs. Uh, I met with the fire chiefs recently. And we met with them about the, uh, the repeater in the south end of the county for Salisbury. And, uh, working on that lease, uh, Mr. Conner looked over that lease. May I thank just a couple of corrections? And, uh, about ready to get that going. That would be, uh, the elevation is what they looked at. And, um, to help go over a certain bridge that's in Salisbury. That will help the repeater there. They need to go over. Now, the other part's going to be, uh, getting the fire chiefs to, uh, put all the radios in sync. That's whatever they do to do that type of thing. We're, uh, but we're gonna help with our part of the repeater. So, that's all I have right now on that update. And I think we'll move on ahead to the motion. The motion. And after that, we have one question for Sheriff. I could have Sheriff in there. Sheriff?
Pretty, uh, you should have in the materials, uh, a memo that gives them their, discuss various cases. Start with, uh, Perry case, uh, Judge Anderson granted a pardon, denied a pardon, motion to be certified. He hasn't told us yet which parties go to trial June and, and which ones don't, which plaintiffs are in there. And he waiting for the parties to notify him as to the position of the plaintiffs and defendants on whether to, uh, mediate, go go to another ground of mediation. And my recommendation is that the commission authorize that. And remember, you can, you can vote for mediation, but that doesn't mean that you want to approve. Uh, you're not tied to approve whatever result of mediation happens. They, that would be a whole separate matter. And on the, uh, zombie cases, the, uh, last one, I believe, was, I said, we'll try to give the, uh, zombie office, go back and check on these and find out if there are any continuing violations. And apparently they don't have the, uh, the staff to do that right now. So, my recommendation is that we bomb Perry, dismiss those lawsuits. And then if they come back up later, we can, we can refile them if the commission, uh, so decides. I don't want to do that. So, I guess I'll need a vote from y'all tonight about as well, vote on the, uh, mediation or non-suit those, uh, those type of cases. And non-suiters, we can dismiss them and, and so without prejudice, so they can be refiled if it's necessary and the commission approve. And then, uh, this next one is Luxon Corrigan, wouldn't it say you, FLSA playing the, the style? Why, sweet home thing? And I'll slip back to the, uh, Paul Magrum of the insurance to see if they're gonna provide a defense for the county. And, uh, for our brother, though we discuss this case in an attorney-client meeting to answer your specific questions about it. And then there's a case, uh, Ms. Zena Page Snyder is suing, uh, over the direction of China, the deputy had. And that's being defended by the insurance company, Nathan Tilly, Elvin Jackson, the representative of the county. And, uh, the next two are cases that, uh, really are not against the county, but the county's named them. The core civic always defend, provides attorneys for the county and then indemnifies the county if there's anything going on in core civic to settle both of those cases. So, they're, they're done. And I don't know the terms of the settlement. And then the, uh, Lawler case. I think I told you last month that Judge Anderson denied the motion for qualified immunity for individual, officer, individuals, jailers, I guess. And, uh, Mr. Tilly took, took an appeal in the Sixth Circuit, there's a version. So, the only, uh, part of that case that remains is, is the party against the, against the county. And, uh, I talked to Mr. Tilly today and he's considered his options on how to proceed with that. But, uh, I think on that, I would appreciate. Any question?
Mr. Johnson, so. You need to, uh, the motion is.
So, on the Perry and Arden County case, uh, we decide till the night we will go to mediation, that we need.
Do you have any sign up?
Okay.
And, uh, and so I'll give a motion to authorize us to go back to mediation on it. And, uh, and the mayor will be there, of course, and then the commissioner. He usually takes the commissioner, so he can pick one to, to work on that. Uh, done, uh, yes, Mr. Vanirch, one time, Mr. Wright went last time, I think, the last time. And, uh, so the emotional match and emotional. Some of the things that authorize we need to, uh, dismiss them. And then, uh, as I said, consider later if there's violations or complaints about it.
So, you need two motions?
Correct.
Let's, let's come with that first one.
I might motion that we, uh, go into mediation.
Say it. And do you have some, do you want to add to that for some particular one? For some particular commission?
Do we do that now? Do we do that separate from?
You can do it.
And I'd also like to know, may, uh, Jack, the same.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second to go to mediation. And we have, uh, to add, Mr. Commissioner Same. Any discussion on the motions, please?
Do we need to ask Mr. Same, will he sell?
Um, that's, that's what we have in this question. Second. You media accepted that nomination. All right, convert the discussion. All right, and for the discussion, then, or we don't need, I was calling, did we? Okay, let's have a rule call, please proceed now.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Devery?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kettlemore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Miller?
Pope?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now we're going to discuss those that were previous, uh, for the zoning, and, um, probably a motion to, to dismiss those.
Correct. That's my recommendation, too, because the zoning office at that time, we're not checking on these right now, apparently they don't have, also, they don't have the staff to do it, and, um, and so, and we don't plan to leave these on, on court's dock, if we're not able to get to them soon.
I'm gonna take those, uh, personal privileges, just a second, uh, some of those are in a different district, uh, Commissioner, do you have an update on the ones over there in town?
No, I do not.
Pardon?
No, I do not.
So are we setting a precedence to say everybody else has to do what they're supposed to do, but these folks don't?
No.
No precedence on that.
How would I, how would I make sure this is correct? But Mayor, have you looked at the same opinion as others, because I've done it since you tried to deal with the law?
Right, I've got the floor. And I tell you, I'm through. I don't think it's right, but, but the commission can vote to do as they will, so I'm gonna ask, what is the plan of the commission? Last one, say it.
Okay, um, so we go into, can I ask, Mayor, what you, I mean, you give us a little bit more information on what, you know?
If these, well, it's setting a precedence, if you, uh, dismiss these, but, but on legal counsel's advice, they want to dismiss these, um, that's why I asked Commissioner Dosa in his district, what is the, what is up there, I know there's one in the commission, um, that Granton was talking about, I think that's been corrected.
And it's one of that, in court?
It's not been corrected. Mayor? Yes, sir, you recognize, Mr. Graham?
Uh, what, what I'm taking this as is, we've had a change in the zoning office, and all that, uh, our attorney's asking is, we just dismiss this now, and then when we do have someone back in the zoning office, if they want to pursue this, that's all we're getting to like, we're not really setting precedents, we're just...
It doesn't, it doesn't establish anything, it's just, it's just the case, I'm, I'm going away for right now, and I, I believe, uh, Mr. Buffer, I think, I think he has a wrong where the, uh, cars are blocking the ladies' driveways, and that is one that, that the commission may still want to, come back on, if you can't get them to get out to the car, so she can get, families can get up there to our house.
We really can do that.
Yeah, that's, that's all I have. What we got, you're only correct, if he or she so chooses to pursue this, then, uh, it'd be up to them to bring it to the, uh, commission, if not correct, and the commission would say, go ahead, or no, we do not need to follow this. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we do dismiss these cases with the option of bringing them back up, or, like, or review.
Sure. At the time that we, uh, appoint another zoning expert, and, and a quick update on that, we have interviews, um, we're gonna, we're gonna schedule those sometime after the fourth day, we're gonna get, I think we have nine that apply for that position. So we have an interim right now, it's Bert Watkins, or the Ricky Watkins, but, um, we'll schedule those interviews later, so... We have the first, is there a second on the board?
Can I have more, boy?
Is there a second on that motion? Our second. Okay. Now, during discussion, you have discussion, sir, on the motion?
I had two of those six that came to me much sooner, that's my job, 'cause I brought a court to the county and to the county commission, taking personal, taking honor, that's all I do.
Okay. Any more discussion, thank you, sir, any more discussion on that, on the motion?
I, I have a question, I have two questions, he talked about the record where we are, where are we with the cases, so, we, I know that somebody said some of them, the people had resolved some of the issues.
And that's why, that's what I'm having to, zoning has to make you go out and check because of their, uh, look, small staff, I guess, and so that's why I wanted to dismiss them, because the courts don't like them, cases sitting on the dock, they don't have to happen, and so it's totally determined whether, that there are some that have, I think, been resolved, and I think there might have been, uh, two of them in, in the Commission of Rights District that have resolved, and another one in Mr. Buffer's hasn't been resolved, so, uh, this, so we're all, you know, the, the commission voted that it was approved, they made a rule on what, vote on what we filed in the judicial future, so to get everything kind of cleared out, and, um, everybody on the second page, and everything running smooth, I thought we just dismissed these, down with the, uh, option to refile them, if once, if there, if somebody comes in with a complaint, and the zoning office can go out and determine they're in violation, then we can talk about that.
So the one two who did comply, if they just show evidence that they complied, or what happens to that, is automatically dismissed, or how does that work?
Well, yeah, there's no point in encouraging that, I mean, if they comply, they comply, and so there's no reason to keep the case quiet, and this, and the chief of, the county, just go ahead and dismiss them, and if they comply, then there won't be anything all back out on them.
It was, they, I understand what you're saying, but my, my only concern is if something happens at their home, and the elders can't get up to their house, you know? It's a, it's a time issue, so that's, that's my concern right now, it depends on both sides, it's the right way.
What, what's the, uh, what's the property owner's name, the guy passing cars?
Well, uh, the owner of the cars doesn't actually own the property, I think the property is in his mom's name.
It is in his mom's name.
Okay.
And then you ask him to come to junkyard.
Yes, exactly.
Well, I think, I think the best thing to do is, I mean, uh, have somebody file a complaint to zoning, and then zoning can take a look at it, and then get back with Megan, and we can decide if what works there.
So she just needs to go back and...
Somebody who doesn't have a problem.
Mayor, I have another question, so you said we're, we're interviewing for the director, so by our next meeting, do you project we should have the director?
Maybe so, I, I can't, I can't comment on that. Because I've got to go through that interview process and screen them, and, um, they've turned in their application, their resumes, and Captain Thurler, go through those, and then, um, because the way the law is, I have to turn that one, the county commission will do the confirmation, but, um, we should, and I've got to address that here shortly.
As you could, um, you could, uh, carve out the one that's in Mr. Buffer's district, that, uh, that is your district, too?
It's my district, uh-huh.
Okay, that's, that's in her district, and then I could, uh, pursue that one, if that's what you want to do, or we can, I'll go in the light and see what happens. We start on the seventh notice again, and, uh, because I think, it's not, it's not a, uh, not zone for a junkyard, it's not zone for something like that, it's not a recollection, I haven't, that's what I'm... But we have said, or, I've always, there, we have never said, not to do your job, make sure that they do it, and the plans are there, but, we never have said, not, not go forward with laws, it's the only thing we've said, she, she does let us know that laws, so, isn't it that, you know, we're not trying to stop anybody from doing their job, so...
Right. Yes, sir, Mr. Graham?
He brought up a court about the ambulance situation here, if that was to arise, it won't tell liability, we don't live in that. If it's a complaint filed by zoning, and that's been resolved, then what could we, what could we get in?
I, I don't think the county would have liability on that, there's a driveway there, I think, and I think, I don't, I don't know the particulars, if, if it just can't get up there at all. Now, if it can't get up there at all, then the county has some obligation to go ahead and get that resolved, but if the angles can get up there, it's just, it makes it more difficult, and I don't think there would necessarily be, uh, be a lot of liability, be liability at the county.
All right, there's a law, there's a lawsuit filed.
Correct.
All right, if it hadn't been resolved, who's got to resolve it, the judge, court?
If, if we don't dismiss it, we'll go to court, and let the judge issue an order requiring that, uh...
Okay, well, if that, well, if that pool, that wasn't waiting on, what's the deal with that?
No, uh, the court's not that full, but, uh, when Mr. Pierce left, he kind of left, uh, uh, space there, so he left, uh, shortage of people, I guess, a vacuum, maybe, and there wasn't anybody to get, to really work with it, to get it all set up, and...
But if it's ever room made, then, then that road, sheriff, go out there, like a fool, that?
That's right.
We like to be done.
Well, for discussion's sake, would you, uh, would, would you say you, you look at these that you have on the, on the dock, that have that script over there, and go by those as a case by case, and say, look, this one, and, of course, Mr. Buffer, and Mr. Lates, something like that, they still haven't complied, so go ahead and go forward without them, if the others are any compliance, or getting any compliance at this time, then, would you go by case by case, or is it...
I would say anyway, if no one's getting compliance, or not, because, uh, our, our zoning, uh, they don't have, in fact, you know, I found the... Or you could vote, tell me just a whole, whole more certain way.
Mr. Mayor? You recognize, Mr. Granton?
Thank you, sir.
Dale, would it be to our advantage, since, uh, that was brought up, to look at each one, and see which one could put the county in liability, and, uh, then we address this?
Sure, I can, I can do that, but I'm gonna have to have somebody out here that knows the zoning law, but...
That's why I made the motion, because we're, we're, we don't have that now, so, and we're really, I'm afraid to pick, set one aside because, and not set the others, you know, set them all aside, because then that's kind of...
That's kind of zero in on the person. I could, I could work with the, uh, uh, with zoning folks between now and the next meeting, which is what you know, you think of that, uh, between now and the next meeting, and then give you an update on that. And one with Mr. Buffer, I think, in, in Ms. Lates' district, I think that one, uh, hasn't been resolved, should probably go ahead and push that one, and, uh, and get an order from the judge, and require the guy to clean up, get the cars, or like...
Well, that was my next question, was do we have anybody like Ricky that can drive out there and just have a talk with them while we're doing this? And see, see what their response is.
If I had contact information, I wouldn't mind talking to it, and, uh, first, you know, I, we've sending letters and stuff, or send letters out there, I don't know what he got.
I'll look at the motion, stand.
Mr. Buffer, have a question.
Mr. Buffer, the company, uh, the house is vacant.
Okay.
They could use somewhere else.
Okay.
So, but I can, I, I think, before, before you leave, I can get to it, Tom.
That'd be fine.
Any more discussion?
I don't remember what his motion is.
My motion was to subside all cases until we have a, a new zoning director that comes in, to review the case, and see if the county wants to pursue, uh, against those.
And when you say subside, you mean just leave the, leave the status quo?
No, no.
Dismiss, dismiss?
Uh, let me ask, I'm not the zoning director, now, I'm trying to think how long I've been on here, but I didn't know y'all been talking about a zoning director. What is the time limit for putting somebody in that office, is, to, to make sure we cover all this stuff?
Yeah, there is, uh, we need to ask, uh, the commission to extend that timeframe, and we did that, to get more applicants in, and we advertised for that, so there, there was no particular timeframe, but it does need to be, uh, appointed fairly soon, I'll have to bring that appointment after we do the, after we do the interviews, and then to next one else, you know, next one's lead.
I just know it's been about two months, and I've been here in the same place, I don't mind, I'm trying, but I was there.
Well, we extended that deadline, and we've got nine applicants in. Okay, no, if there's no more discussion, the motion on the floor is...
I just want to have, make clarity, that we're seeing all cases.
All, all pending cases?
All.
To dismiss them?
To dismiss those until we have a new director, a new director review them, present it to the county commission, and we need to proceed.
Correct, okay.
Well, I got a question, I thought it was, it was gonna go by individual, you know, like you're saying, look at them, you can't be, the time alone, who's, the, 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 the doctors would use the word for, they're descending, the, the status of.
The, the cases are there, and they can be picked up by the new director at any time, it's just they're dismissed from the court hearings at this time.
That's right. And the problem with checking on this, is nobody checked on it, until, as opposed to, to get, to get a zoning director, not leave them.
It's not like we're giving them forgiveness, we're just setting the sides, we'll get a new director, dismiss the cases, and let the new director decide what action needs to be pursued.
And, and one, one of your districts with the, uh, car, this horse, so-called junkyard?
Uh-huh.
Uh, I, I'm gonna go ahead and contact them anyway, uh, Mr. Buffer's gonna give you their information, and I'm gonna send letters to wherever they live, and obviously they don't live near the house anymore, so, you know, go ahead and, you know, send a notice out to them, and then you can clean that up, and then we'll, we'll use that one to refile, if that's true.
Any more discussion on the motion, please? All right, same and done, uh, we need to move into, need to, a rule call, hold.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Devery?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kettlemore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you, sir, now, uh...
I have a question on another lawsuit pending here, that's Luxon Core, would, you said you could not elaborate on it without turning it on?
Yeah, I, I, we need to have a turn to talk about that.
But that just came on board?
That just got, uh, last week, I think, so they got served last week, because that's what I'm sending to, uh, Mr. Manning, with the insurance company, to see if they're gonna provide a defense for the county. That will, that, that will, that will, what, what the county does in response to it.
Right. Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, I didn't know, I didn't know, to, uh, address these budget amendments here at the last, I think we got something for the Sheriff's Department and the budget amendments, so Commissioner Sain, he's the vice chair of our Budget Committee, if you please, uh, proceed to, uh, our budget amendments.
Okay, uh, yes, several of the amendments did not involve fund balance or salary, but, but, so you'll take those out of group, and that's number one, number two, number three, number four, number seven, number eight, number nine, number fifteen, and number seventeen. If you pull up, we'll, we'll, or, 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 so we'll begin with, uh, number five, that department gets the county order, and we're debiting eleven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and crediting eleven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and that's for the number one office. Number six, you know, the ambulance department, we're debiting clerical personnel, twenty thousand dollars, communication, eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, fund balance, hundred and fifty-one, three twenty-five, we're crediting overtime pay, a hundred and five thousand dollars, state retirement, seventy-four hundred, unemployment, seventy-five dollars, healthcare, fifty-five hundred, maintenance for repair vehicles, seventy-two hundred, and gasoline, forty-eight thousand.
Questions, that's only, overtime, was that gonna carry them through?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, uh, number ten, uh, miscellaneous, it has, uh, debiting fund balance, twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and crediting, uh, trustees commission, twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and according to this number, that's money that we get in from the state that we have to reimburse them with trustees commission.
That's true.
Number eleven is landfill, we're debiting part-time employees, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, employee Medicare, five hundred and fifty dollars, communication, five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, maintenance for repair equipment, thirty-two hundred dollars, crediting social security, a hundred and fifty dollars, accounts, bookkeepers, two hundred and fifty dollars, clerical personnel, fifty-six hundred dollars, part-time employees, twenty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, rentals, two thousand dollars, travel, a hundred and fifty dollars, liability insurance, twenty-four hundred, and refunds, a thousand dollars, and if you see the difference in the part-time employees, where we're debiting one, we're crediting... And if you see the difference in the part-time employees, where we're debiting one, we're crediting, they're different numbers, one of them's landfill, one of them's, uh, the biggest. Number twelve is the sheriff's department workhouse, uh, debiting guard pay line twenty thousand dollars, crediting vehicle maintenance twenty thousand dollars. That's, uh, there's an explanation of that movement, that's gone from the guard pay line to vehicle maintenance. Number thirteen, sheriff's department workhouse, debiting guard pay line five thousand dollars, crediting guard overtime five thousand dollars. And that's just moving funds to, um, to make payments.
Both of those carry the rest of the year?
Yes. A little bit, right, Sheriff. That was right, that would carry, that's projected to carry the rest of the year?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, number fourteen, sheriff's department workhouse, uh, again, debiting guard pay line and crediting vehicle fifteen thousand dollars. And that's for a vehicle purchase for the jail administrator. Number sixteen, sheriff's department, uh, again, uh, well, this is sheriff's department of the workhouse, and we're debiting, debiting pay line thirty thousand dollars and crediting gasoline thirty thousand dollars. And the final one is just, uh, remind all legal fees, uh, crediting the fund balance hundred thousand dollars and crediting legal fees a hundred thousand dollars. That's all of the other things.
You're recognized.
I think it has to be important. Sheriff? What's the difference between the, uh, the guard pay line and the, uh, the workhouse?
The guard's pay line is in the workhouse.
It's inside, is it, I mean, it's in?
The, the guards are in the workhouse, the workhouse is the total budget for the day.
Okay. Okay. I just know that you, oh.
Please, yes, sir, Mr. Gil.
Jack, you know, you did say number seventeen, the legal fees.
Seventeen?
What?
Eighteen.
Yeah, it was, it was seventeen, I was telling you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I see it.
Commissioner Decker, you're recognized, sir.
Come, say, hey, when you go say? You take it out?
It was taken out, it was approved by the budget committee, didn't involve fund balance.
Okay, I missed that.
I guess there's no more questions on that approval.
Uh, we've accepted the budget amendments, as read by Commissioner Sane. Same, same. First has been made, firm, and second? Say no discussion, then we will move into a room call, go, and put, please, ma'am.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Deverry?
Yes.
Yeller?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kettlemore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
All right, just a couple of, uh, real quick notes, Memorial Day, if you've noticed, of course, I know everyone has noticed, the flags out in front, uh, there's the state flags, of course, the American flags. The state flags are, you know, in memory or in honor of somebody that's, uh, at extreme or, or dedicated service to the county, to the state, to the community, as a community leader. And of course, our, uh, American flag, well, um, some of those have been made in honor, and some of them have been made in memory of. That money goes to the Carl Perkins Center. They came up with the idea, if you wanted to donate, uh, work flags, and they came, they, uh, did the flaggers, the, uh, the nameplates, and, and that's what those are on each flag pole out there. So it's twenty dollars, you want to do that, to contact the, uh, Carl Perkins Center for the challenges, and all the money goes for that. Uh, I think it's a great thing, it's beautiful out there, and we're gonna have a small service, uh, gonna be at, um, ten o'clock on Memorial Day. So if you can, come out, and I'm gonna have, uh, a few things y'all might be interested in. Let me tell you, a couple of more quick things. I'm gonna let you know that just a few days, uh, I will send out an email, if that's gonna be the next permission meeting, we got it for June the eighteenth on that Tuesday, but I may have to move that, because we're, we're waiting for some figures, and I see Dr. Smith's left. But we need, um, quite a bit of time to work on some things with the school board. And I, I may need to move that then to the following Tuesday, which would be June the twenty-fifth. Is there anybody that has a, excuse me, final pick on that twenty-fifth?
Yeah, one.
Okay.
Now, that would be the, excuse me, question, that would be the final reading on June the twenty-fifth?
No, 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 we haven't had it for, that, that, we still don't have it first week.
So we have the first reading of June twenty-fifth?
Yeah. Yeah. Because there's figures that we don't have right now, and we've gotta work that out with the school board. And there's a couple of more little things that we've got to work with within the county general and one-on-one, but, but some of this is pertaining to the school, hitting those tax appropriations correctly. So, and then... And then, uh, if there's, if there's any other special...
Okay, we don't have first reading on June twenty-fifth, who we don't have, man, or June third, is it, is June third?
That's right, and, uh, we're talking to the budget committee about that, and said we would have to, uh...
Have to continue the budgets?
Yeah.
If we can't get it done, uh...
The way they've done it in the past is they continue on with the current budget, and then it's, uh, it's like a proration amount, we would go in until that budget is adopted. But we have to, uh, advertise that in the paper from that first, from that first reading, and then move in, so the public can come in, we have to move into a public hearing on that, on the budget, of course, and then when it's adopted, and it will go into effect.
The school board doesn't have to have their budget in by July first, huh?
Yeah, I don't know, we've, we've got to work on that, so, they, they said they go to, uh, and last week's been, they were pretty much, but they're waiting on our tax appropriations. Because the state county, what they do is, is a smaller portion from what the state and federal, so they've got that, but it's, they're waiting on this, uh, from the county funds. And, and we have proposed, uh, different things about the sales tax, uh, there's different ideas that are out there about recognizing more sales tax, doing the appropriations different on the, on the property tax, because the county can't work on the pro rations that come in from, uh, from the sales side, from the sales tax side. A lot of different things going on, but let me say to this public, we support our schools, and I think we all, we're on, we support what they do, and, uh, and that, that's not an issue at all, we're just trying to get the budgets right, and get the money and the funding right, get those pro rations, because we also have, uh, different things we've got to do in the county, but, uh...
I do have a question.
We need to go through that on the sheriff's area real quick, yes? Billy, you've got that for the ice maker?
Sure, sure. Believe you, ladies and gentlemen, be very brief.
Come on, the... Mr. Barry?
Yes, sir.
We have a, uh, old ice maker, and it's been two thousand ten, it took a while, we replaced it for about a third of it, it was a costly, it takes this one, so we're gonna head home and do it. It's such a, it's a, I'm waiting to break for y'all, get a clear surplus. I mean, sell it on the field, take the drag yard, I'm gonna tell you, that's about how it's, it's really... I got one other thing, you're explaining. Thank you. You got this sign, what do you call it? Giny line, brown baby, it's the next last one we got. It's an error, it's dying, y'all, we're gonna put that sign on the field on the field, we sell it cheap. It's a little cold.
We get some new cars?
He does. He does. Uh, the, 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 the ground baby, it's, we got more of that, but I like to call it the, it's like a U. I'm in my, I brought parts, and by doing a late, I'll, it's, it's low mine. I wish you all would put it on there, duddeles.com. AKA, it's new, good, it's a lead, it's, you need a motion to approve those two items, please, someone?
All right, we have the motion, second. Second, that motion. All right, we have a motion, second. Any discussion?
That's what it is, it needs to be turned about, I work first.
Saying, uh, all those in favor, six, five, same. Is there any, any more business that you discuss?
I have a question, mayor, so we can still, um, call for Carl Perkins, if we want to put a flag up there?
Yes, ma'am. And October first, is what we're saying, for that, to have that turned around.
Question, again, maybe it will be the twenty-fifth, possibly, you gonna let us know?
Yes.
Instead of eight month, okay, can I?
I got a question. Why they go back to this girl? Is this the reason that we are, I just knew, um, is the reason we, we got the letter tonight? Because I remember when we did that. I remember it, about the sales tax.
All right. Saying that, answer, and then everything else, we'll return, so, move, second. Player four, you are a gentleman.